Good evening everybody, I'd like to call the order, um, the meeting, the city council meeting for July 8th, 2019, City Hall, and I'd like to ask Jack Green to lead us in order.
Well, we thank you for another night, um, Lord be with us council to help us make the right decision for the city, be with the people in the city, uh, be with all the first responders and our, our fire police, our, um, our troops, and, uh, be with everybody on the way home, keep us all safe, thank you, Lord.
Our flag was lifted, stood by, on the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Recording the agenda for tonight, we need to amend that, Miranda will not be here tonight, um, she had family stuff she was dealing with, so the, the minutes will be on the next meeting, we need to remove the finance report from 6C, and we need to add, um, the MSA contract, the discussion of that on 7D.
MSA?
Yeah. And we can have or not have any effective session, if, if we need to, otherwise we can just remove it if we don't need to go in there. Any of the, um, any of the things we were talking about last week?
No. I'm not hitting the MSA, no.
Okay, so, so let's remove the effective session as well, and then I'll make a motion to your per agenda. Can I get some changes?
Check.
All in favor? Yes. Do we have any other reporting?
No pickings for no pickings, Mary.
All right, thank you. Appreciate you guys being here.
Thanks.
All right, and we're going to remove, um, 130 minutes. Yeah, that's gonna be the next one. If we want, that's just, yeah, because I know that this is due in 5/24, I believe, too, so we have, I think the next meeting after that's the fifth, so if we're gonna have a meeting, we need to have it after. Do you want to do a work session, do you guys want to do a work session just for Kennesaw Avenue, the bids we had on 24th?
We may be out of town, just letting you know.
After, when we're doing that, 24th.
She said the 24th.
That was on the list to do, because we may be out of town.
It's Tuesday.
It's Tuesday.
I think we'll do that Wednesday.
It's that Wednesday?
Yeah, I think so.
So, a work session maybe on the 26th, Thursday?
I think possibly, and then we'll.
Yeah, I need to find that for sure, I was thinking we left 24th, we couldn't wait.
No, it's, we'll come back about Wednesday.
All right.
We'll just figure it out, and then send out an email, instead of, since they've committed.
We just add a time for that, if we decide to have one.
Yeah, for, yes, 24 hours.
All right, department reports, Mr. Edison, did you come up?
Good evening, everybody. Nice month, last month, couple of calls, not very, but I did want to discuss, and I know you guys are on my email list, you got, you got about all the entering autos that we had, and so forth and so on, what I'm hoping is you're passing that on.
It's on the city.
It's on the city email inbox, I expect. Every one of the 38 vehicles that were entered that one night on 15th were all unlocked, nobody's car was broken into, it was just flipped the door handle, opened the door, cash, guns, laptops, all taken.
We had it happen to us a week or two ago, and there wasn't anyone.
What road was this on?
Uh, in Forest Creek subdivision, Mountain Falls subdivision, and Brook Park, all along 20, going toward Canton.
We had a rash up here.
Yeah, we've, we've had, we've had them up here, too, and then two weeks later, they hit up here on 5, going into our Ball Ground, they hit River Brook there, and Sage Hill, same thing, these guys are all coming out of Atlanta, they're not local guys, these are all gang bangers coming out of Atlanta, because they've got the word that us country folk, they can leave their trucks unlocked and leave guns in the truck, so, uh, that's why I'm hoping that we're spreading the word, at least if you're gonna leave your car, if you gotta leave your car unlocked, I do mind, at least locking it up, don't leave anything valuable in it, because it, it's happening. Um, Canton arrested six guys in Great Sky, all 18, 17, and two 14-year-olds, um, the ones with ours on the 15th, um, we actually chased them, we, and we called the chase off at 140 mile an hour, because it was just way too dangerous, they had stolen a BMW X5 from Milton, and that was their getaway vehicle, and they had, there were three cars in the one subdivision that people left keys in the car, so they had moved those cars out of those driveways and staged them to get, so when they were getting ready to leave, they were all gonna break into three, four different cars and take off with the carriage in it, but we foiled that part of it, so, just, I guess, keep spreading the word, lock up your cars, lock up your batteries, that's it, any questions?
I appreciate it, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Can we get, um, what result to, do we, do we have a copy of the information for all of the, um, at least all of the subdivisions, like, well, I haven't, I have Tom's information.
The problem is, we don't have, like, a master list, we can find a way to get a master list, because there's a lot of tenants that live here, so you'll have to, like, the landlord's address, but it's not people that live there, so you don't, we send out, like, we do these flyers once a month, and they're doing it.
So we can add it to the flyer?
That would be probably.
That's a good thing, and we can put it on our website.
It's on the website.
And then we can get, um, we can also get a master list to, to the, um, property owners in the subdivisions like.
There's a way.
You could, you guys have a, a website?
Yeah.
If you can get it added on there, maybe we can find out who has Nelson Bridge, Nelson.
They'll get the flyers, for sure, the problem is, if you know, they don't give me all of their house, they get P.O., they have P.O. rocks, because a lot of them are taking in Canton, Ball Ground, and then on here.
Master list really always, I think I've got Tom's information, he's the one for, Tom Thompson is the one for Long Lake, um, I know that we get a lot of emails even from Renee regarding weather and stuff, that we could, we could shoot out to, um, to some of these people, as well as put it on our Facebook page, when we have information on the weather, things that are happening, like 575 shutdown, we could get that over to those people, that may be something that. Thank you, again, um, for me, um, I know that we've talked a little bit about, um, our, you guys should be seeing flyers already for our next movie night, which is gonna be the 13th.
It hasn't come, it was a late one. It actually should be here Wednesday, when anybody can do the best office for the federal.
So spread the word. Our next movie night's Wednesday, the 13th.
Yeah, banners and everything.
It's Wednesday?
The 13th.
Saturday, that's on Saturday.
Yeah, come on out and, and enjoy some hamburgers and hot dogs, movie, and, um, you know, just the community, mainly. And that, if we have any, um, I know that you guys, project-wise, you guys have seen the wall that's out here, you've, you know, seen the sidewalk, we have dumpster days going on right now, who've gone through, next Monday, they'll pick it up next.
They, well, they picked it up this morning, they're, they'll pick it up Wednesday, they got it Friday, and they got it Monday.
Just working out some.
Yes, it's for citizens in Nelson, and don't put your trash in the beginning of the dumpster, put it to the back, so it can fill up.
We, um, we had to shut it down this weekend, because it was packed.
It was full.
It was, so, but that's a good thing, right? Because I'm not, I'm not fussed about it.
Yeah, I'm glad they're using it.
Yeah, exactly, I think we need to get more than one, I need to check the prices out, because that other was full, and, what was it, six or eight hours driving?
Six. Did they work on Saturday, can we get them to vote?
I was just seeing if they could.
I feel this is close on Saturday most times.
She's got none of them.
If they are, they come in.
Can you get two dropped?
That's what I was, I, we were talking about that, because that one, literally, they dropped it at, like, 10 o'clock that morning, and we, it was overflowing, we had to go in the rain and put a close sign and drag barriers and stuff, and prefer to.
Okay, moving on to unfinished business, uh, Kennesaw Avenue Drayage Project, we have, I knew our, we just talked about our bids being done in 5/24.
The pre-bid meeting was on 28th, and we looked at bids from Madison, and didn't bring the meeting until 24th, too.
Anybody have anything on that? I'll get with Bayory, I took an action, get with Bayory, too, I'll see if, if, if we had, and maybe schedule a little, a 30-minute work session on Thursday, just to talk about that, and talk to them, anything else?
And with the survey company, there didn't was a survey company, so, um, Jones and their call, you know, it's a charity survey, they came and reassessed, because we have to prove ownership in order for Georgia Power to move the polls, we don't have to pay $64,000, so they went out there, and we found these old maps from, like, the 50s that had been adopted by the city, they use that, and several other things, and we had everything we surveyed, the new pins put in, I think they finished this morning, they were out of date last week, so, so it's about $64,000, and we can do something else with it.
Anything else on Kennesaw Avenue?
Oh, Kennesaw.
Okay, um, be discussing going on the 2019 millage rate for the Cherokee side of the town.
That's the Blue Town, under 7, we're actually, did probably give a little bit of a roll back, because the values went up, so it keeps, um, what we're bringing in basically the same.
0.87, I'm not sure what I'm adding on.
So we are lower than a little bit?
They were lower in the millage rate, but the home values went up, so it makes it so it's just even.
So we're just keeping it back.
Because if you went back to 2014, it was 1.124, and now it's 1.7.
And we could have motion to approve the millage rate.
A motion to approve the millage rate.
All in favor? You know, thank you. Um, compensation for council and mayor, this is the third reading, right?
This is the second.
Second, do we have to do three?
Just two.
Okay, we've sent out another reading to make it official, basically, but as of January 1st, 2020, mayor and council received $50 for leaving compensation, and now it's official, because we've done everything we have to do. So we don't have to vote on that?
Yeah.
Okay, you can go ahead and do your, create a motion.
$50, each meeting, January 1st.
You can make a motion.
Yep.
I'll say it.
All in favor? Yes, thank you. All right, MSA contract, the, let's take a minute.
So there are two of those, one specifically for animal control, which is really fairly standard with all the cities, that the Marshals Office enforces animal control in, and I think most, if not all, of the cities have contracted with them to do that, because cities usually are not equipped to.
Oh, we've called it before, and we had to have them call out to look at, checking on that, and the guy told me when he got here, that his boss had actually called him right before the city limits, and said he officially did not have jurisdiction here, because we have not.
Signed the agreement, exactly.
And this is a, you can't, you can't audit or edit this one, this one is a standard.
Right, and we had, we had long ago, um, adopted the county animal ordinance for this reason, I think we had adopted both county, both Cherokee and Pitts, just to be completely and totally safe, so, we did that years ago, to allow them to, they used to just require you to, uh, adopt their ordinance to enforce, now they wanted a specific agreement.
Yeah, you, you've gone over this, but can you, can you point out, is the change?
The animal control one is just, is just generic, it's one that you can't, and that one's.
It's the different.
But it's, this is their one agreement, for the animal control, yeah, this is the animal control.
They're not titled differently, unfortunately.
Yeah.
They're both just saying municipal services.
If you look at all under scope and services, one's having animals in it.
Yeah, it's dark south, under scope and services, about animals.
But it's just very, every city has the same effect on, from my understanding, you can't change it, you can't edit it.
That's correct.
So it's done on, so it gets called in, and it goes to Cherokee County?
Correct.
And this one could be effective for Pickens County as well, here?
This authorizes them to do this for the entire city.
Okay, so, any questions on that piece of it, I know that, uh, I think we need it.
I'm gonna have to look.
Has, has the dog bag stopped in the?
We got all our signs and stuff, and we still have them signed, but so long as, we did give it all things in today.
Yeah, I saw those, I actually saw the one out by the trail, that was, that little, it looks nice.
They don't, it's just very generic, I think it's just, you need to sign it to have the ability to call them in if there's an issue, um, Pickens does not, they don't have the powers, what they call them.
I want to vote on these, um, one at a time, then, so, can we get a, a motion to approve the animal control MSA agreement with Cherokee County, that covers all of the city.
Can you make a motion to approve that?
I'll say it.
All in favor? Yeah, thank you. And next, who has the rest of the stuff, are the question here?
That's one we're seeing, are you, I'm making sure, do we know there have been some changes?
We got to discuss the pieces up, but there's probably one component that you may not want them to, um, provide, which is planning and zoning, um, I mean, that's up to, no, obviously.
Well, the catch of that is, I know there's supposed to be huge houses built, that somebody's gonna have to read the plans, because that.
Different than planning and zoning, planning and zoning is where they would hold the public hearings for property rezonings, and so if you have traditionally not wanted to hand that over to the county, in my experience, I mean, y'all, previous, anybody that's ever discussed it, didn't really want the county zoning, handling the zoning.
Understands.
For building code compliance, absolutely, I mean, I think that, that way, because you have to contract.
So how, how would we go through and remove that? We're having trouble getting them in.
Right, exactly, and so that's difficult.
Literally, six times.
The planning and zoning component is 1.3, they do that for, um, the cities of Ball Ground and Laresca, if that means they'd be having a public hearing at the county or anybody, the folks in the rezoning their property, we don't have a lot of zoning applications, and right now we have the city council designated as the planning and zoning condition, so traditionally, the council wants to want to keep that.
So 1.3, that's independent status, what is that?
Which one?
You said it's 1.3?
1.3.
They run out of property around here to rezonate.
Hold on a minute, she's, she's got.
I've got the wrong thing, is anybody else missing one of the?
I don't think I got it.
So Jeff, would you just go back to, would you go back to them and tell them that you wanted?
We can strike that, unfortunately, they don't care, believe me, they'd be happy to do it.
Okay. So if we had a zoning issue, how, how would we handle that?
The initial policy.
The council.
Little Boma.
Yeah, a rezoning application is filed with the council, the council considers it, grants it, and has it.
Okay.
Without it being heard by the county. It's kind of a, I don't know why they do it for the other cities, honestly.
The people want both the same right here and there.
Did you get to the same one?
Yeah.
How's it going?
Yeah, but I think, did you get the same one?
I don't know.
I think it's coming out of the front. Okay.
One, so the animal.
The animal would just approve, which would be this one.
I don't know, I got two of the other.
I got two.
That's the, you got the right ones?
Yes.
I'm just, like, right, all these stuff. Land use regulation services, that's the one.
Right.
Okay, we just want to remove that.
I get, well, I guess the only question there, let's look at the components of it.
Because the flood hazard might be a good thing to have them do it.
That's true, I mean, possible flood hazard, stormwater, um, soil erosion and sedimentation, you probably would want them to handle, but not.
And we're doing a lot of stuff about that right now, a bunch of stuff's coming in, and they all looking on, and how kinds of, um, EPA's over water, and.
Now, if you had any zoning violation, you might want them to handle that, but you don't want them having your public hearings, we could probably break that up.
Okay.
So that they're just handling actual ordinance violations, and they're not doing your.
Some ordinance violation.
Yeah.
Take video.
Um, probably.
Is it still going to have to come from the city, the, the city's gonna be the only contact to the county, or is it gonna be?
I think that's what I reckon, we just came in this morning, and we were reading through them.
They have to read up on all this before we vote.
Yeah, I don't think we'll vote on this one, animal control is just very generic, this one I do think we need to read and put for the next meeting, actually vote on it.
They, the way they have it here, appears to be maybe both, it says that they would perform all functions performed by the Marshals Office as necessary, which presumably would encompass them doing whatever they normally do, then in additional, it says that they may do additional work related to inspection of code violations when requested to do so by the city.
There you go.
I think, I don't think they are on this, and I talked to the.
They're not gonna be out.
Oh, no, they don't, I talked to the, um, deputy, chief deputy marshal, and they're not well set up to distinguish, I mean, if somebody were to call 911, which is, I think, who you call for everything, you know, they don't have a separate number for code stuff, and say, "There is a code violation," they check it out, I don't think, and they're not in a position to say, "We're sorry, that's in that city, we can't go check it out," because I don't.
Well, it kinda needs to be that way in some sense, because there's times, like, there's been issues with the residents that we think doesn't have sanitary facilities in that substance outside of Marsco, and expertise, and you need to be able to turn it over to an expert.
Well, I don't think they look at that to some degrees, you know, what they're supposed to do, they, the Cherokee County Marshal's Office is not, in my experience, an overly, um.
They're not very fairing.
No.
Yeah.
They will, they will respond to complaints, they certainly do not, I have never seen them here driving around looking for violations.
So what are some of the concerns that you guys have with this, I mean, just from what you're reading?
I have a chance, well, I don't want for just somebody calling or harassing their neighbor constantly, like, we're having trouble with our town.
No, that's what.
Now, we can't do a sign thing, about a fence and stuff like that.
Yeah, okay. Well, that's why, because they have it in here, that it's a conditional step, for residents that are in writing by the city, like, we have to send them, I think.
Right, you, well, the idea is, if you identify a need that has not been addressed, you can make them come and do it at the request of the city.
But the average homeowner can't call down there and get them to come out and check?
They would be, I believe, they would be able to, yes, I mean, you would do like anybody else, you'd call, 911, that's who you call, and say, "I believe there's a code violation," or whatever, now, they're used to dealing with the, the stuff, they deal with those kinds of disputes all the time, and.
Yeah, very, really crazy, no awareness.
Well, they know how to deal with that, because.
Well, my answer to that is, you know, we, we, before my time, the council, um, they approved certain things, like, for example, with a fence in the area that was approved, um, the council approved it, I wouldn't want anybody to be able to go back on that without conversing with me and the council, and say, "Hey, we had this complaint," I mean, we need, they need to understand that this, this right was given to this person, or.
Well, it's written that they're enforcing our ordinance.
And that was.
Okay, gotcha. And so they pretty much have to.
What's the dear commission of this agreement?
For you, it's renewable for your side.
And I think it's got a provision that either side can terminate it whenever they want to.
Yeah.
Nobody's paying anybody anything, if they don't want to know what's going, they can cut it off, if we don't want to know what's going, we can cut it off, um, it just says, yeah, at least, uh.
No, when I talked, when I talked with Barry, Jerry, supposedly, the way that this was written up, it's, it's basically on the city's terms, he's, we, we had, we had worked with him, because we had approved the MSA agreement, where every city, remember the one where we approved, it was like $5,000, it was 1, 3, and 5, and I don't remember all of the, the agreement that we made, but it was something where every city had to pass some skin in the game, do you remember that, with Ball Ground, I can go back and look at my notes, but anyway, um.
I think that's how we knew that other agreement, if there are any issues with some of the city leaders, not here.
Well, it's not, we've already signed that for, and they agree that, that our $5,000 would cover us with this, because we don't have.
Which $5,000?
It was, remember when we did those ordinances for the MSA, or SDA?
I think service delivery.
Service delivery, it was like $5,000, so that was, this year, when, when Mike and I met with, with Jerry Cooper, that, that $5,000 was going to cover us, would, that was what we had talked about, so that's all this is, and then there was gonna be no charge for this, if we did the $5,000, which we agreed to, and I don't think that's even come to fruition.
And I was wrong, the termination, the way it's written is, it's just year by year, it extends for a year.
Probably something like 45 days.
45 days before the end of the year, if we cancel it. If, if we care about that, they may, they may be willing to make it terminable.
I can't, I mean, I can't see, I can't see us wanting to cancel it, I mean, there, there, there's definitely not an overreach here of any kind, they're saying that they're going in here to our ordinances, and pretty much just do, do what we can't do.
Well, we can, but it's by the time we do it, it's.
Well, we can, but we, it's not, because we have to, we would have to call the county, we would have to have the county go with us to, to deliver the, the notice, and then, you know, I'm, I'm.
What we lack is the law enforcement component.
Yeah.
I mean, I can say people that, I mean, we can, you know, hold court, but then there is a cost, because then we gotta pay the judge, you gotta pay me to come up here for probably one case.
Yeah.
Now, bids do say that we would reimburse the county for attorney expenses, but their ordinance cases right now are handled by the solicitor's office, so it's not an hourly thing, now, that has, at some point, they did have the county attorneys billing hourly to enforce ordinances, but that's not the way it is now, so if we need to get any clarification about that.
Again, we would have had that, some monetary expense, if you had the police department holding court here, we were still paying the judge.
You had to pay, you had Rick to come, you had to pay for a public defender, I mean, the, the cost was, I think, on, on $11,000 worth of tickets, when I did the research, we paid out $23,000 something dollars, it was.
Police departments.
Too much.
I mean, they're doing it anyway.
Yeah, and they're giving it for us.
So even if we end up having to pay some, it's still gonna save us money, and then you have, like, people that do this for a living, you know?
My understanding from, from Jerry is, is that we can get, there's a, we have contact, and that's a minus as well, but we can get with them and say, "Hey, that's where the council, when we do our retreat, can have a conversation and say, what, what, how, how are, what are some things that we can do to address the needs in our city, like, and we're already looking at that, you guys have done a good job in looking at some of these houses that are dilapidated and falling in, and, and things like that, how can we, you know, how can we help, we don't want them to become, um, you know, uh, meth houses or drug houses, or things like that, so, or, and we don't want people to get hurt, we don't want kids tromping through there and getting hurt, either, so, you know, those, we got few heavy hitters there, and, um, we can, you know, we can take that back to the, to the zoning folks and say, "Hey, here's a, here's a list of properties that we need for you to look at," they do it for us, we send the letters out, then, then you have the backing, if, if this is not complied within 30 days, then it's a court case, just like the top up, you know, where we've got this, um, uh, all the cars and stuff, where they're working on the, you know, the supposedly the shop, and he's got all these cars out there, we've been sending letters for two years, and. you know, the supposedly the shop, and he's got all these cars out there. We've been sending letters for two years and nothing's happened.
We've been sending letters to your own tape.
Yeah.
On the Brad garage.
I mean.
We might need to edit that tape before it's.
Something like that. I mean, those are, those are things where we can definitely, you know, meet with, meet with them and say, "Hey, here's a list of our heavy hitters." And, and.
Please handle these. Because we've tried, we've done everything within our power before it starts to cause.
I know we got that. I'm just concerned about just everybody calling down there and reporting everybody else is my problem. And then send them to Cherokee County to call.
Well, they're used to it. They're pretty reasonable in dealing with it. They don't just go issue citations because they warn people if necessary. They reserve usually their citations for the ones that you know. I mean, they know. Things that really matter.
Is there a way to word it so that a citizen has to make a complaint for the city, and the city?
I don't care that they will, we can pass. I don't know that they're equipped to do it that way.
And I, well, I'm asking that too because if you have citizens calling in for stuff that really doesn't need to be handled, the city can't be held responsible for payment of things, that should be deflected back on the person that's harassing the neighbor.
Well, it just, it leaves y'all out of it, which honestly probably be good.
Yeah.
Because the situation you have now is somebody comes in here and complains about their neighbor or whatever, and you have to decide.
Yeah. Way it's found, if we had a written.
Kind of difficult for y'all to have to do.
Well, it's not. Right now, it's, it's, we're limited on what we can do without an agreement. That's the problem.
Sure.
We truly think we are.
I mean, what you could, it may be worth discussing the determination provision to ask, because I thought that I had seen that maybe in a previous version, that it was terminable with the, at will by either party. Because if we set it up that we could just say, "It's not working out," then you could give it a try, and if it doesn't work out, you could terminate it.
Do you know who's over the zoning ordinance stuff for Cherokee County?
In terms of enforcing the ordinance, it's all the marshal's office.
Okay, it's marshal's office.
In terms of, in terms of violations.
Correct. Is the default, the most important, that's the default, if they come in and handle this?
Then their building department does the, the building codes.
I think that we need that, especially with all the stuff going on.
I think, I think that's, I think that's something you need to notice.
Yeah.
So I can ask her about, make these items terminated at will.
I mean, we do have some now, we do check for sanitary facilities and all that stuff too, but I'm not sure I want to be somebody's house.
Right. No, you're not equipped to do that.
With the old one? Yeah, but that's what we have now. So we have, so we have, we are reporting right now, let's do it. Cherokee County, the guy that did it before would be doing it. He would be doing the inspections now.
We're having a hard time. I haven't called him. It's been, I think it was beginning of June, James and I started calling to try to have these two here condemned. Cannot pin it down. We called, like, it was Friday even, or maybe it was last Wednesday, to try to, "Oh, well, we're going around town. Just, just call me on Monday." But I might be called Monday and Tuesday. And then he called and gets voicemail, or, and it's, I mean, he's just busy. It's not that he doesn't want to help, but it's.
Yeah, I have new jobs all the time, and I have to, I have to have a schedule. So if you can't come Monday, you need to give me the first available day.
There's never any, any kind of date. It's call me back, call me back.
So that's why I'm going to want to get rid of William.
Yeah. He's a nice guy. I mean, I don't have any, I mean, his inspections, the quality is fine, but if we can hand that over to the department that that's what they do, and we're not having to harass them to get something done.
See, when Cherokee was handling all of our building inspections, we had not that first problem. See, we had done that before. Yeah, we did that before.
It's all the other stuff I don't want to.
What's that then?
I said, "I don't mind the building inspection and stuff. It's all the other stuff." I'm just going to wait over all this and marks and stuff and see.
Well, you have specific questions too. I mean, you obviously could email them directly, but if you want to bring it in, and then I can, you know what I mean? We can even take this, make notes, scan it, and send it to them to go over, to get specific questions answered.
Add that to, I do want, I do want to look at it here at our work session.
We have a separate work session.
Just wait on next week. We may have a little more.
Give you a little more. Well, I just figured if we can discuss it at our work session, then any, any issues that you have, maybe we have clarification before our next meeting.
Wouldn't you say work session, but 24th?
We didn't schedule.
We didn't schedule, yeah. I'm, I'm going to call Barry first and, and then find out. I think Barry said the 22nd, and they'll be back on the 23rd, so we can talk.
The biz aren't doing 24th though, so you don't want to have a talk with that.
Or the 26th. That's on, that's on Thursday. Yeah, 26th. This tentative.
That, that should be a Thursday. It's not for me.
It is. Yeah, when you guys, anybody that has any thing that you want us to get clarification on, read through this and see it before then, let us know.
I have a question. I have a waiting column. That's my.
I don't think you, I honestly don't think you could control that now. Even, even if a citizen had an EPA issue in here, they would call down.
Well, EPA, yeah, I know that.
Yeah, I mean, it wouldn't matter because, I mean, that's, it's the same with code. If your neighbor, if one of these neighbors decided this house.
They don't come out here now, but.
For example, well, they don't, but they went to Laurel Lake. They went to Laurel Lake, and that's in Cherokee County. So we have a house in Laurel Lake that's right up around from me that, that there's been no tenants in, and I think you got an email on it. So, because we were going to send a letter, and it's, it's got some structure issues as well now, and the company bought it about a year and a half ago. They haven't done anything with it.
Have they asked for anything?
Yeah, a neighbor's.
Been empty for over ten years.
Say that again.
It's been empty for over ten years.
It's been empty all the time. The guy was going through a divorce and some other stuff, but he.
He used to be in there, Mel.
Oh, I didn't know that. You did tell me that. Anyway, but, so they called on that, and they, they're asking the city to send a letter, but the neighbors have called.
But he told me he was sending a letter through the H O A thing. Does that answer what you want me to say to him?
He calls it, I answered if you would. He told me he didn't call me. I know, and I told him, I told, I didn't, I told him, he's asked if you would send that to him because of the.
I mean, you could ask the chief marshal or the chief deputy marshal also to come to a meeting and explain how they do or don't do business.
But I mean, I.
You may want to hear from them.
Well, you can also probably warn them.
And also, we just said some of the case by case.
Do you all like it?
Real basis.
They've been a while.
Well, you know where I'm saying that, but it's.
Yeah. That's my concern.
So, let me see if I can get the chief marshal to come and answer any questions that we have for our, for our July, our August meeting. How about that?
That's my, my home is.
Is the zoning?
Well, it needs to come through here.
Ordinance violations.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Was it you got a problem or something? You won't have to tell them.
Oh, we have that or ever.
He was in.
There's no, you got that. Which one I said? Oh, yeah. You'll wait time to tell you in later.
Anything else on, on this for a while?
All right. Do you want us to discuss and vote on the library, on the library resolution?
Yes, you want to do that?
Did I? I prepared, we had talked about establishing a small city library. Since I prepared a resolution to make that legal to do so. You're obviously authorized to have a library by state law and by the charter. So the way that works is, pass a resolution to establish one, you would ultimately need to appoint a board of trustees. I suggested three people. Put that in there, just so you don't have to worry about too many people. Can't be y'all.
Yeah.
So you need to find three citizens who are willing to be your library board of trustees. They just have to prepare an annual report of how they're recommending that whatever signs that the city council has budgeted for the library is being spent. That's their job, is to say here's what we do. So you would need to ultimately establish a budget amount for the library. You need them in a budget at some point to include that, and you would need to appoint a city librarian. And that can be anybody. That could be one of you.
Nathan.
I said that that, I wrote in here that librarian would not receive additional compensation.
Well, we changed it. It was paid for. We know all kinds of people who are here.
Okay, if you're thinking about that, I know the, the, it comes with some, which I.
Yeah, we ordered a library. It's on, it's coming in, and it'll be set up as a little free library initially starting out, and we can add to it as we go. But it will be registered as like, it's actually, we already purchased it, so we would have been last June. It just isn't here yet. But that would just kind of slowly progress and add to it as we go.
And supply the main. Kids books as well for it, so.
And we discussed as well having a computer for school kids or someone who need projects and internet access and.
Which we have one in there that's not being used right now, but I got to get with Bob to make sure there's no city stuff on there.
And putting Doris on it for the internet.
So it's.
It might stay out there. It's walking, it's not weird. But I think it should be here this week. I need to, I'll definitely check it.
So it's ready to vote on if you want to vote on it.
I will make a motion to approve the resolution for the city library. I guess that, all things, and thank you. Discuss vending machines and golf carts permits.
This is just kind of a thinking about a thing. Nathan brought that up a little while back, and the possibility of doing golf cart permits. And so they're legally driving. Actually, I need to ask you as well if that's something we can do if we don't want a police department.
I was going to ask the tenant's tenants. What is the?
Legalities.
I haven't pulled it up. I know there's a lot of different laws about small vehicles and all that stuff.
Okay, so.
Putting you on the spot.
The short answer is it's complicated. There is two different state statutes on what makes a low-speed vehicle legal. Most of your golf carts don't fall into the low-speed vehicle statute. However, that being said, Cherokee County has done a thing now where the county commission can approve golf cart permits in subdivisions if subdivisions vote to have golf carts legal inside the subdivision.
Yeah, they do.
Yeah, Bridge Mill, I think Woodmont's looking into it, a couple of those larger subdivisions that have golf courses are looking into it. That being said, I don't know the legalities of, because the city streets are governed by the city. As long as you're not out here on the state highway, you, you, you can probably adopt.
We just need to make sure that we weren't going to talk with.
Well, you do have to have a license, correct?
Yes, it has to be.
If you're on the road.
It has to be a licensed driver. It can't be anybody, you know, it can't be 12-year-olds driving golf carts around.
I told two permits from other cities, and they're in the office, showing how they pass the ordinances and stuff, and it, it, there are various specific specifications as the type of vehicle, the max speed, the driver, and you guys want to hear this, but it's.
As long as it's not illegal for some reason to drive them on the road.
Correct.
We're just having issues with, like, four-wheelers doing donuts.
Four-wheelers.
Are not in that category.
Four-wheelers are never going to be legal in Georgia.
Yeah.
For, for golf carts, a whole other story.
I just want to clarify that. For the record, golf carts.
Um, usually when they, when a city like Peachtree City is a perfect example, they, they've adopted where golf carts are just like cars. But just like cars, they have to have working headlights, working brake lights, they've got to have a seatbelt, it has to be driven by a licensed driver. And I know some cities actually, I guess with their permit, they give you almost like a license plate, you know, that identifies it. And so the, in order to re-up your permit every year, you got to pay whatever city tax to re-up your permit every year. So it is a whole lot of, you know, from my standpoint, if you make it legal, that's great. I won't be harassing the golf carts. I'll still be out for the four-woes.
Yeah.
Especially the ones that are doing the.
And a 10-year-old driver.
Yes, and if, you know, you got the golf carts and you got to let your 10-year-old ride, we're not going to. Um, I, I will assure you that we won't, like, throw your 10-year-old in jail and, and allow the golf carts and stuff. We, we try and use a modicum of common sense when we enforce this. Because we have this problem, like I said, in, in subdivisions where they haven't adopted anything yet. So, you know, we still get the 12 and 13-year-olds that are taking the golf cart and going to the pool. Or, you know, they're, they've got their six and eight-year-old little sister in the car and, and the golf cart off they go. Well, no, we don't do that. And mostly what we do right now is we're educating the parents, "This is why you can't do this."
Yeah.
And so far, we're doing well with that.
Also liability too, there's.
Yes, it's a lot of liability. But that's going to be, like I said, whatever the city adopts, as, as long as it's on the city streets. I know that you won't be able to do it on the state highway.
Won't be able to do it on five.
Nope.
Would it be possible to cross it though? Because our walking trail, it runs literally across the entrance from Laurel Lake.
Probably have to check the state DOT as far as doing that.
Maybe let you make sure there's a cop.
Because I don't think you're going to be able to do that legally.
We said it differently than a law. We're crossing the street. After we get pictures.
No, it's, it's not.
It's probably all illegal.
It's probably.
Well, I'm saying because our maintenance guys have to cross.
Yes, I know they do.
It's not a way to.
You know, conducting city business to, to cut the grass on the other side of the.
They have to make a holdover one time by pickings.
So much for my advice, mine is side by side and conduct city business.
No, we will not be able to have a permit at all.
If it's a city on side by side, you know, maybe. I, I have dicked the grass.
You have to hold over one time by pickings.
I wouldn't do that to it, but again, I like to exercise a modicum of common sense when I do these things.
Better stuff. You have a name, but yeah. If people are going to do it anyway, then we need to have all season.
You should, you should have, you should have some, something in.
And it's a little bit of money for us to use.
And, but you got to make sure, like I said, if you're going to do it, it's got to be a licensed driver, and you, you should have certain safety requirements. At least headlights, maybe not, you don't necessarily get taillights, but at least headlights and some sort of safety belt, especially if you're going to transport small children.
Yeah.
You know, because, I mean, if you're transporting an infant, you still need to put the car seat in there somehow.
Yeah.
So.
I'll pull, I'll get the copies the ones that are pulled and let you have them, and then I just want to make sure we're all on the same page, because I don't want us to do something that's going to get us in trouble.
Yeah, but low-speed vehicles are completely different. There are street legal low-speed vehicles. Chrysler used to make them, call it a gem. I think Mercedes used to make some too. They actually can go 35 to 40 miles an hour. They have headlights, windshield, windshield wipers. I mean, they've got everything a car has.
Yeah.
And you can actually get a license plate for a low-speed vehicle through the DMV and pull down yards and get their perfectly legal drive. They're very rare to find them around here, because they're very expensive.
Yeah.
Last time I priced one, they were like $10,000 to $11,000.
That's just, you know. Is there any liability, liability back on the city if we adopt something like that, Jeff?
No, it's just permitting.
It's just saying that we allow it on the.
We can permit through here, we can permit through.
You can do it here.
If you want the fee permit, then we would do it.
And permits, it, it'd be just, I mean, you wouldn't have any more liability to work for somebody driving a car.
If, if they cause a wreck, that's not on the. But I have the, the ones that we pulled, the copies from other cities, I don't look at. I just wondered everybody's thoughts on it before we fit any more time into it than.
If you don't own one, you can probably rent one from all, right?
I don't want.
Yeah. Just remember, four-wheelers are.
Exploring that.
Four-wheelers are still there.
I don't like you.
I thought. Stay in all lanes. If a street is 35 miles per hour or under, as long as it's got working headlights, taillights, turn signals, horn.
And it's permitted.
Okay.
That's the catch.
That's the catch. That's always the catch.
So if you have the permit thing, then it would be fine, but if it's not permitted, then you're not supposed to be on the street period. There's all kinds of weird technicalities.
What's next, our next meeting and all this with what you've come up with?
Okay, the other thing was to discuss. Okay, the other thing was to discuss the possibility of having vending machines in town. James said we actually have that at one point.
Yeah, a lawnmower out here and one over to fire department.
I remember there being one at fire department. And I guess they've been vandalized or something. We have cameras now, so wanted everybody's thoughts. I contacted Coke to try to get some type of pricing, fees, whatever the costs associated with it are, but haven't heard back from them as of yet. Because there is nowhere to get anything in town. You can't even go get a bottle of water or Coke that'll walk into the Dollar General.
Is it, is it legal for the city to have, to purchase our own vending machines and stock it?
To what extent?
Yeah, as long as we save what the funds are used for, for the Laurel Museum or even to offset costs for movies or.
Really, they do have Coke.
Well, yeah, just because I have no idea how they, how they do it, if it's a.
Yeah, you can do that. It's just an extra headache for somebody to keep up with.
Isn't it worse if you put one out here where.
The librarian can do it.
Just tell Coke, we don't earn any profits from it. Make the price as low as you can on it.
They should punish it for free, shouldn't they?
Yeah.
I don't know whether they're just running out.
The thing about it is, is there's a lot of people that. As long as you run it out of time. Why would you do that? Why not take those proceeds and do, and fund a back-to-school program for our youth or fund new books for our, for our library or.
You can have the maintenance guys keep it stocked.
Yeah, or even, or even say, fund a movie. I mean, depending on how, if you've got to go to the playground to get a book or. Who wouldn't do that? You know what I'm saying? I mean, I think, I think it would go good, especially.
Talking about putting one, like, at the park or what.
Yeah, just somewhere where there's cameras.
Yeah.
Just so that way if there is vandalism or something, it's in front of the camera and you know who did it.
Yeah. With a big sign, don't ruin it for everybody else. Just saying. You know, I mean, we could try, we could try one here. If it goes over well, maybe, you know, maybe move it down.
For beer, we have a beer vending machine with ice cream on it, too.
Yeah.
Just kidding.
But we could, we could use those, we could use the funds for stuff like that, right?
Yeah, if there's a way to get the city, I don't think you can have a revenue from it.
Well, you, Cokes, depending on.
On how those things work.
Because they run it off a long time. Even if you should, they're saying thirty-three cents a can. And if you're, you know, you sell a Coke for the dollar, then you can take the bulk of that. I mean, I think it would be a good deal. Especially for kids around here. We've got kids that would probably utilize that. And we could turn around and do like a.
They'd buy a coffee machine.
They had them, like, where I was looking at you.
Yeah.
There's Sam's Coke in there, like, why?
I'm just going to get up.
Hey, we're going to, it's going to be Nelson. It's going to be Nelson. Come on.
When's the T-shirts, Barry?
They're on order. The T-shirts, I've got to get.
Nelson.
I have to pay for them. We have to go and pick out the colors because the sheet isn't always accurate. It's just a meeting over this week.
Okay, so you can give us some prices?
I can get them. I just wanted to make sure everybody was okay with it before we put more time and energy in it.
That's fine.
Probably help nobody out here and then to.
So we'll do that, then we'll, if we decide to do it, we do need to set things that we're going to, you know, set it, what we're going to do with it, getting our, she can add it to the budget. But we need to have, you know, like I said, we.
See, you zip proceedings.
See what we, see what we have coming.
You'd have packed with movies and stuff like that.
Yeah. I think it'd be good. It's not a whole lot, but it's enough that, convenience factor and that.
We could.
It goes back to the people that live here.
Yeah. Okay, so we've got some additional information on this thing.
We'll get pricing on purchasing one and part pricing from just having them come set up one time and see what the differences are. I think in the long run, Chief's right though, that purchasing one, the price would be higher.
I'll talk to my friend, he knows the Kenneth Foxon around Jasper. A lot of the machines, but see if we can get him to call over here to the city.
Probably take him up for years to get a return on.
Invitation. Yeah.
Yeah. We could use that out of parking racks or something.